Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order a workshop meeting. The City Council of Satellite Beach, November 1st, 2017, approximately 6:50. Reason for the meeting is interviewing a board applicant. Vicki, Hawks, if you would mind, please come up, speak into the mic, and please just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay.
You can sit.
Okay. My name is Vicki Hawks. I have lived in this county, other than going away to college, and then afterward, living in Southern California for three years. I've lived in this county all my life. I'm in Melbourne Beach. My mom still lives in the house I grew up in. I went to University of Florida College of Nursing. I have lived on South Merritt Island most of my adult life until last year I moved to Satellite Beach. And I'm a master gardener. I'm very interested in plants and nature. And I would just, I would like to become more involved in the community and contribute what I can.
Great. Thank you very much. You know, we have a community garden now, too. Did you see that? The Sustainability Board, it's very interesting.
Yeah, I've not seen it, but I know that.
They just had their ribbon cutting Saturday, and it's pretty neat. Question?
I don't really have a question, just a comment. Obviously, being a master gardener, you want to be on the beautification board. I think that's a, that's a pretty good fit. I think you'll enjoy that board. I enjoyed it when I was liaison to it, so thank you for volunteering your time and wanting to do this. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Just as far as either one of these boards go, Vicki, is there, is there really a preference for you, or do you see which?
I think beautification.
Okay.
I think I'd enjoy being out on Simpson Island. I think they do a lot of hands-on stuff out there as far as like, you know, physical work. I would enjoy that, too. Probably I would rather do that when they have a day where they, you know, need extra help.
Right. Okay, thank you. The beautification board, if I'm not mistaken, is a Friday morning board?
Mm-hmm.
Nine o'clock, is that?
That works for me.
That works for you?
I mean, I do travel some, but otherwise it works.
That works. Okay, great. Questions?
No, I just want to thank you for wanting to volunteer on one of our boards, and I think I agree with Steve. This would be a great fit for you on the beautification board. I was liaison, been at board for years, and they do great stuff in our city.
Thank you. I'm excited.
Any further questions? Like I said to you before, it's an agenda item down in our packet. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. Now, we'll contact you.
Okay.
On the orwell after the meeting.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much. Any further applicants or questions? Nope? Okay. We'll close this, the workshop meeting. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, November 1st, 2017, approximately 7:05 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence and a pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item, move on to item number three, presentation of the new canine police dog. Door.
Thank you, Mayor, council. We, I'm here tonight to show you our new police dog, our new canine. But before we bring the dog in, hold on, hold on, because he's going to go crazy. Because that's, because he thinks he's working. You know, just introducing the dog and Amber, who is going to be the dog's canine handler, wouldn't really do the program justice, because the program that we have right now in Satellite Beach, the canine program is outstanding. And when I say it's outstanding, it's not just because, you know, I work there and I think it's great, but when you have other agencies that have canine programs, and they call your agency to bring your dog out, when they call and they, and they call Lieutenant Frost and ask for training information and help with this, and when they have him help them pick out their canine for their program, that tells a lot. That tells a lot. And as you all know, Darren, he works Flex, and that dog was purchased by, and donated by Ed, Jeannie, and Jessica. Ed Andre, and it's one Jeannie, and it's our Jessica. And when we met and we first talked about the program, he said, boy, I would really love to help with that. He said, I think, I love animals, I love Satellite Beach. And he was talking so highly of Satellite Beach and the people, and she told me all those things, and he said he wanted to donate. I said, you know, I'd be the first to ask. I said, well, why don't, which place Satellite Beach do you live in? He said, I don't live in Satellite Beach. I'm like, wow, he did a pretty good impression there. And he's, he's just been a wonderful friend since, since then. You know, his business, Frog Bowls on the US line is just doing, is doing great, and he's just been such a good friend. So not only did he donate the first dog, but he also bought and purchased and donated the second dog, and he just bought and purchased and donated Thor, our third dog, along with some ancillary equipment that goes with it. And honestly, that's just, that's incredible, and I just wanted to say. I just want to give you just a small token, I'm sure with, with all the accomplishments you've got in life, you probably have a lot of these things, but this is just something I want to give you. It says appreciation for supporting our community, and it's got our nice patch on there, and I want to see that on eBay or anything. Put this in the back window of my porch. Yes, no, well, I don't know about that, but give it a try, right? Again, it's just a small token. I know, you know, we've talked many, many times about how much I and we appreciate it, and I just want to say publicly and in front of everybody that I could possibly say it to, thank you very much. Thank you.
Now, all right, where is he?
Okay. We're going to bring the dog in. I just want to let you know, if you've got anything in your pocket, you're not supposed to have.
He goes straight to John. I just want to really know.
That was fine, the dog was okay. Amber started with the police department with, well, in law enforcement, 2005, Oklahoma. She was a dispatcher in Oklahoma, and she ultimately moved to Florida and started working for Indy Atlantic Police Department. She started with us in 2014, and when she came to us from Indy Atlantic, I thought that was just an absolute theft. I mean, we just stole her from Indy Atlantic, and I couldn't be happier. We haven't given up a lot of high draft picks and a lot of cash, but it really, it was one of the best moves we'd made. And ever since she's been here, she's just been absolutely awesome. And when you can get a program like this and to run a canine, when you've got the experiences she's got, it just benefits everybody. She's an animal lover, she's dedicated, she does, she exemplifies exactly what we want in Satellite Beach, and I tell you what, I'm not sure anybody loves that dog more than she does. And I'm really excited to have her be our next handler, and I know between Steve and between Lieutenant Frost, that with their guidance and your dedication, I think it's going to be a great program again. And I really want to thank you, and I want everybody to see the dog. Anything you want to say?
We're excited to serve you guys and take you abroad.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. So Lieutenant, come on up. You want, would you do me a favor, and just very, very briefly, like 30 seconds of how we came to the name, and then introduce the people that, that came up with the name, so we can recognize that?
We decided to do a Facebook contest in order to name the new canine, in order to, you know, put it out to the community, let the community have input and take ownership of the dog. So we had hundreds of responses.
Hundreds of responses.
Everything from Harbiol Cookie to Starship to Stingray. I mean, we had lots of really cool responses. I think my favorite may have been Buster, this little boy that put, who wrote in on his mom's Facebook page. His mom was very quick with his language, this is my seven-year-old son. I think he should go and bust it, because he's going to bust dad's eyes.
Bust, right, yeah. That's what he put on the Facebook, but a seven-year-old kid.
So after getting all of the responses, we tallied them up, and it came down to four most popular. And the four most popular, we put those back out, and they were re-voted on, and it ended up with me being four. And we went back in Facebook, which is hard to do, trying to find out who was the first person to say four. And we came up with Darrell.
Darrell.
Tallied, who had put in for four. So we'd like to recognize her, and she's a winner for our contest. And evidently, according to the mayor, the council and the board are going to be paying some money.
Uh-oh. I just want you to know, before I had you come up, I just wanted you to know, when I had, I'd gone home, and I was talking to my wife, and I said, you know, the contest is going really good. And I said, if you look at, she said, I did, isn't that cute, that little boy said Buster. Buster, Chris, who votes bust. And she said, so how's this going to work? And I said, well, whoever, I picked the four that go on there, and then, or I said, I picked the three that go on there, and then we'll vote. She said, what three is it? And I named three, and it wasn't Buster. She said, I think you should have four. I'm like, no, she was, I really like Buster, and I think you should have four. So we put four out there. And Thor still won overwhelmingly, so Darrell, come on up. I just, I have a little clap for you. I want to say thank you for participating. I think it's kind of cool to know that for the next eight or nine years of this dog going around, and we're calling on Thor, it's all going to be because of you and because of your suggestion. And again, this is a grateful appreciation, and it's got our patch on it, and from the Satellite Beach Police Department, and we just wanted to probably recognize you and thank you for joining in and getting such good support.
Thank you so much. And I'm thrilled to hear that Buster's wearing.
I love this kind of play.
Thor is a great name. I love, I like to rescue for the animals versus the adopt versus the shot. I have a chef myself, his name is Baywood, and I kept going back and forth for Baywood at that time, so when I saw that, I thought, oh.
There you go. And you did.
Shows a lot of strength and protection, so a perfect name for an animal that's going to some.
Well, hundreds of people in the city agreed with you, because they all got one by a landslide, so.
And I didn't know about the four guard, a little guilty about that.
No, 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 no. We, we weren't going to name him Buster. We weren't going to name him. I just had to put him on there, because I didn't have to sleep in the garage.
I understand. I'm a husband and a state father. And I need to meet.
You have to. We're going to go outside and take pictures, and you can meet him, and all that kind of stuff, so.
Very, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good chief.
Thank you.
Her training starts next week.
Well, that's right. Her, also Clay and Thor go to their training next week. I've designed this little 10-week intensive program, and yeah, it's a long time, but it's very, very important. And it's a lot of work, a lot of dedication, but we're looking at that, the dog, well, Darren picked him out, so he swears he's going to be perfect, so we'll take the time. Again, thank you.
Chief, everyone. Thank you very much. Ed, thank you.
I will do that thing for the, hang on, give him a little picture.
Okay, great. Thank you. Move on to agenda item four. Count Vice Mayor Osmer has graciously accepted to do this, to present a proclamation recognizing November 11th, 2017, as Veterans Day and a Day of Servants in Remembrance.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you all are delighted to do this, only because I am a veteran also. Part of, one of the things we talk about in here is always remembering veterans of the past, those that have passed. One of the ways that I actually do this every day as a former Bonneville member, that I always carry a coin with me, and on the back of that coin is actually the dedication and the monument for all those Bonneville guys who have passed before me. Something in our last words, as we always say, is we remember. So now I can read the proclamation, where it says, whereas November 11th is dedicated to extraordinary Americans who have worn the uniform, United States Armed Forces, and on this day we come together to pay tribute to America's sons and daughters for their service and sacrifice. And whereas our veterans have preserved our way of life with unwavering patriotism and quiet courage, they have charged in the harm's way, sometimes making the ultimate sacrifice, and to protect the freedoms that have blessed America. And whereas, long after leaving the uniform behind, many veterans continue to serve our country and communities from coast to coast as public servants, as mentors, parents, and community leaders. They have, they have added proud chapters to the history of America. And whereas our actions must strengthen the bond between our nation and our warriors who protected our freedom in years past and protect it today. And whereas, with respect and recognition for the contributions of our servicemen and women have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world, we must fulfill our sacred trust to care for our veterans. And whereas Congress has approved and requests that we observe November 11th as Veterans Day and a National Day of Service and Remembrance. Now, therefore, on behalf of Frank P. Cattino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Florida County, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2017, as Veterans Day and a National Day of Service and Remembrance. I encourage our committee to join together and to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through the ceremonies and prayers, and to pay tribute to the many heroes who served and defend our great nation. For any veterans we have here tonight, I thank you for your service.
Steve, thank you. Moving on to agenda item five, citizens' comments. The floor is open for non-agenda items. Here are none. Back to council, city council comments. Would you like to start, Steve?
I'll just say, on behalf of that veterans' thing, that I will be participating with Seapark Elementary with their Take a Veteran to School Day on Friday. I look forward to that. I took part in that last year. I thought that was really great. And looking forward to the Founder's Day and the parade and all the events that are about to happen. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. No, sir, I have nothing.
Thank you.
I spent a couple of days in Tallahassee last week and visited a lot of our representatives and state senators, and I can tell you that the mindset in Tallahassee has not changed much. We had preemption bills that we faced last year. Some of them didn't pass. We're probably going to see some of those type bills come back again in this session coming up in January. And I made a copy of a report based on what I did, and I submitted it to Courtney and to Lenore, so they have a copy of it. But, you know, we have our work cut out for us in Tallahassee if we want to continue to do the things we do for our community. And I'm sure we'll see more of these things as they come down the pike in the next couple of months. That's all I have.
Are you, Mindy, anything?
I attended the community garden opening this weekend, and it was, I don't know if any of you guys have been out there to see it, or for those of you that have not been out to see it, it truly turned out to be quite beautiful. I was very, very impressed with what Nick did and the efforts at the whole Sustainability Board, the Boy Scouts, and it was just, it was really amazing. And Halloween on Sherwood, still trying to come back from that. Other than that, it's all good.
Thank you very much. I also attended the community garden. It was great. Nick, staff, everyone, all the people that participated. It brought a whole different part of our community together, which was really good, and I think that's just going to continue to grow. It was a very good turnout and great job by everybody there. Okay. Any other council comments? Nope. Here are none. Move on to agenda item seven, city managers' report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, November 4th, at the Schecter Center, we will be, we'll be presenting our Founder's Day and Marketplace. So the parade will start at 11:00 at Delora, so you will all need to be there at 10:30, 10:45-ish. So put that down. Mindy, like that?
That's just the mistake he's trying to decorate for Halloween. It's, it's, it's.
And then the marketplace, actually, goes from 9:00 to 3:00, so if anybody wants to go earlier, you have that option. We received emails from former Councilwoman Larian Gott thanking the Fire Department and Public Works for their service to residents during and after Hurricane Irma. And I have been asked to participate in a panel for the Florida League of Cities Symposium on Land Planning and Resiliency during the Legislative Conference on December 6th. So kind of like the marijuana thing that we went to, it'll be the same thing, but this time it'll be for land planning and resiliency. So I'll be participating in that. We also were invited to create webinars for Thousand Friends of Florida, which is a advocacy, urban planning advocacy nonprofit. And so we'll be looking at participating in those in the next couple of months. And tomorrow, we're being interviewed by BBC for our climate change planning efforts in this county. We will be distributing an invitation to a Commercial Conversations event on November 30th, 2017, at 6:00 PM to discuss, or to all city businesses, and we will be holding this event at the Schecter Center. It is intended to cultivate a better working relationship with our business community. So we'll have the chambers there, we're offering our jurors in, like, kind of like a happy hour event at the Schecter Center. I also wanted to let you know that the sewer utility, we've been working with the Brevard County Sewer Utility to look at, you know, solving the discharges problem into the Indian River Lagoon, and we are holding several meetings with them prior to the public meeting that we'll be having, which will be at the regular county commission meeting on December 5th at 5:00 PM. And they'll be, that's where the utility will be presenting the solution to the commission and the recommended actions that they're hoping to get the county approval to solve those problems. The Sustainability Board won an award from KBB for, I can't remember the name of the award, but for their actions as a board. So that will be presented to them at a dinner later this month, so we'll send you that information so you can attend if you'd like. And on with sustainability. We will be bringing back to you the idea of a kids' sustainability board in partnership with Delora Middle. So we're looking at creating kind of like a mock board, but with kids, and hopefully we'll be able to do that right after the early release day. They'll be, we're hoping to create a nine-member kids' board with three kids acting as staff. So we'll present that outline to you. We will need to do some changes to our board handbook, and we'll be asking council to hopefully approve that, and that you may be appointing those members in the future. Delora's very excited about the possibility of doing this, because it, we've noticed in our participation with the schools that we do a lot with the elementary schools, and we do a lot with the, the high schools, but we don't do a lot with the middle schools. It's kind of like that lost era. So we're hoping to bring them in to participate as well. We are requesting your approval, this is an action item, to approve the use of the city's stabilization fund reserves up to $450,000 to cover the cost of hurricane-related expenditures in the Jackson Avenue Stormwater property purchase. We are expecting to return these funds with the later additions of AdAlorm funds and FEMA reimbursements. So although you've already authorized the, the use of those funds, we just need to move funds out of the sustainability fund into our general fund restricted, right?
Stabilization.
It's like, yeah, and we have to have special council permission to do that, largely for cash flow during this time of year. We don't have a lot of cash flow, so we're waiting for payments. And we're expecting that to be returned, so.
Since it is an action item, first off, discussion, can council? I have one question on this, Jim. It seems to be FEMA is very slow, and looking and reading, it looks like it's going to get slower. Hopefully, we don't have hurricanes every year, but chances are we're going to have them. How are we going to handle it? You know, I think we need to look at, because we didn't get paid yet for last year.
We did get notified that they have checks in the mail. We haven't received the checks. But we have two checks in the mail. That's about maybe a third of what we're expecting.
Right.
So that, for Matthew.
Right.
We did, we did hear, not validate, but hear, that FEMA's reimbursement schedule for Irma is like six to seven years out.
Really?
Because they're so overloaded with other natural disasters throughout the nation, and they're, and they're already over budget significantly.
Again, I'm pleased on this. I just, you know, at some point, we need to find, look at it, best case, worst case scenarios, because we have to keep putting these funds out during the time of year when funds coming in are slow. And they're not small amounts. I mean, extra hours and to prepare for a hurricane, the extra pickup and so forth that needs to be done. You know, we tried to build this reserve fund up. Maybe we need to look at that number again, because it's going to take some X number of years to get it back. I just want to make sure the order.
Well, we have enough in reserves for any hurricane. What we don't have is, if we keep using them, we don't have the money to put it back.
That's kind of my point, is that it's going to be.
You raise taxes, or you cut services. I mean, that's the two answers that you have.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure we look at it in a way, because if it's, happens a few years in a row, how do we, you know, handle it?
I mean, the other, the other answer that you have is, well, answer, but it's an argument that we would need to be making at the legislative session, that, you know, if we keep having hurricanes every year, and FEMA's seven years out, maybe a $25,000 homestead exemption's not the best idea.
Again, just didn't, I'm just kind of worried when I read it and seeing how much, and we didn't get back from FEMA, and how far behind they are.
This is what keeps Brittany, Suzanne, and I up.
I understand. Any other questions for, for public? At this time, open up for public comment on this action item. Here are none. Back to council. Have a motion. Have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Deacon?
Yes, motion passes. Nothing. Thank you. Anything else, Courtney?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for the city manager by council? Moving on to agenda item number eight, discuss, take action on Resolution 997. Jim?
Resolution number 997, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, supporting a bill in the 2018 Florida Legislature to make texting while driving a primary offense under Florida law, providing effective dates, reading Resolution number 997.
Thank you. Chief?
I just simply want to say thank you. I hope that we pass this resolution tonight to send a message to the legislature that we really need this to be a primary offense. When, when you have a secondary offense that's so difficult to enforce, it's, it's just, there's no teeth in it, it just does nothing, and we all know the dangers of it. I don't have to spend time on that, but I just think it's important, and a lot of other cities are, are doing the same thing, and I really would appreciate sending that message from the City of Satellite Beach, and we also want that to be a primary offense to, to keep people safe.
Thank you. Questions? Michael.
Chief, just, just to clear, clear my understanding, primary offense means what? How does that define out?
A primary offense means that you can stop someone for that, for that offense and that penalty.
Specifically?
For example, if I'm working and driving down the street in my police car, and I look over and I see somebody on the phone, and they're texting, I can't stop them because they're texting, even though that's illegal, even though you can't text and drive, being a secondary offense. Now, if they're speeding and texting, I can stop them for speeding, and then you can issue a citation for texting, but it's, it's so difficult to enforce that without it being a primary offense, it's virtually useless.
Does that allow you to stop them when they're stopped at a light, and they're texting? I mean, if they're texting while they are physically behind the wheel, is that part of what this will correct?
Well, it would be, it would have to be how it's written, but as of right now, it would be while they're driving, while they're operating the vehicle.
Okay. Further questions from council?
Motion to approve Resolution number 997?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Brymer, excuse me. By Councilman Brymer.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Osmer.
I just want to say, wasn't this the same issue you used to have with seat belts?
Exactly.
Right? It was the same, same thing at that time. You couldn't pull somebody over for not having a seat belt, but if they had a taillight out, you could pull them over for that, and then give them a ticket.
Correct. And the percentage of people wearing seat belts when it was a secondary offense was, was minimal. It became a primary offense, it didn't take but a couple of years of enforcement warnings, and now the seatbelt usage is dramatically up. And that's hopefully what exactly will happen here.
That's what the big difference of it was.
Any other questions from council before I open up? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Nine. Here and no public comment, back to council, any further discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes by nothing. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance...
Nine.
Yes, yes. I flipped one, I'm sorry. Yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry. Discuss Take Action on Ordinance 1146. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1146, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending appropriation of funds for fiscal year 2016-2017 budget, ordinance Number 1127, set ordinance as previously amended by ordinance Number 1139, providing an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance Number 1146.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. We're going to go through briefly the 2016-2017 final budget amendment. One thing, just to, to let you know, and let the public know ahead of time, is that the CRA portion of this budget amendment needs to be further amended. We discussed that at our city, excuse me, our CRA meeting prior to this meeting. We identified that the way the numbers were presented was unclear and didn't list out the projects that remained to be spent for the fiscal year. So those funds are still allocated to those projects, however, that wasn't represented properly in either the slides or in the actual amendment itself. So we are going to schedule, as discussed, a follow-up CRA meeting right before your next council meeting on November 15th. And the action we would ask you to take tonight, if, once you've reviewed all this, and if you're okay with it, is to approve the first reading, on first reading, the final budget amendment with the caveat that the CRA will be further amended, amended to show that detail. So just to move real quickly through this, we've just broken this out by fund, by major fund. So first, to talk about the general fund for you. Essentially, we've just given you the overall revenues and expenditures, the total that we were at when we had the amended budget during mid-year, and where we actually ended the year, and what that final amendment would look like to, to get everything in balance. You can see that there's a, an effect here in this, in the general fund showing the, the use of approximately $780,000 in fund balance. And that is, again, as Courtney mentioned, due to the three things that we've just talked about in her report, is due to the purchase of the Stormwater parcel to Jackson, and then the fairly significant expenditures for both Hurricane Matthew and Hurricane Irma. Matthew, we've submitted all of our requests, and they totaled just about $300,000. As Courtney mentioned, we got notice that last week, two checks totaling $80,000 were finally cut. We've been waiting for months and months. So that was exciting, but we've still got, you know, ways to go on that. Irma, we actually don't have our, our FEMA specialist assigned yet, and we're waiting on that person. And then we go through the whole process again and submit all of our requests. Right now, based on just preliminary numbers, our submittal is going to be probably, again, in the $300,000 range, you know, give or take a little bit. So bottom line is, fund balance as of 9/30/17, we're estimating around $600,000. That's going to go back up as we start, you know, getting these monies in, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. The next fund is the Community Service Fund Group, which, you know, has a variety of things, the donations to police and fire, recycling trust fund, things like that. You can see pretty close to where we expected to end up. We're basically using around $44,000 in fund balance. Again, that one ends up at around $221,000 in, in total fund balance. Again, most of that is, a significant chunk of that is donation money, anyway. The Stormwater Fund, also no real significance changes overall. The net total net effect, the fund balance, again, was around $15,000, and that was an increase to fund balance. So you see, we end up at around $238,000 in, in funds there. The CRA Fund, as discussed, we will be amending that because it doesn't properly reflect that the project expenditures are still going to happen. Moving on to capital assets, you can see that we had, did have to use some fund balance here. Part of this was due to hurricane repairs. For example, the DRS Schecter Center that had to be repaired was around $50,000. We also had some, some other minor damages, but we also had some projects that were, the budget dollars, for example, the skate park, were not shown in this year's budget, so they had to be rolled forward, and so that reflects, it used the fund balance, the dollars were there, they just weren't actually budgeted originally, so that's all reflected there. Again, we end with a fund balance projected around $660,000. And finally, the Health Insurance Fund, you can see that we actually had, as expected, a little bit of, excuse me, an increase to fund balance in the tune at this time of around $46,000. And that just is basically, you know, we, we budget the expenditures and the revenues on that, and we, our goal is to put a little bit extra into fund balance, hopefully a lot more, but, you know, at least a little bit in every year, and we were able to meet that goal again. And that's really it, in a nutshell, just high level. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Sam. Questions from council?
No. I just, I would make a motion to approve Ordinance 1146 on the first reading, with the understanding that there will be changes made to the CRA portion for the second reading.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilman Brymer. Any discussion from council before I open up for public comment? At this time, open up this Agenda Item for public comment. Here and none, back to council, any further? Sam, thank you very much. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes by five, nothing. Thank you, staff.
Mayor, just to, to comment real quick, there's legislation that we popped up last session that I think Councilwoman Montanaro was talking about, and he thinks it's going to come back again this session, that would require us to spend down every fund balance in every one of our funds before we could raise a tax, which is, from a financial standpoint, quite frankly, the dumbest thing you could possibly do financially. And so, but that's the kind of stuff that we're seeing on the state level.
Is that got any chance of going anywhere?
I think after the hurricane, you have very valid comments when you go up there and voice your concerns, and I think that's what collectively the cities in Florida need to do to combat that from moving anywhere.
Okay.
The Senate, the Senate is very much against this. The House is pushing a lot of this stuff.
Okay.
That's crazy.
Okay. Did I think of a moment?
Yeah. Next, ten.
Right. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance 1147. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1147, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending conditional use regulations for congregate living facility located at 500/510, 520/522, and 530/532 Lee Avenue, and 505/515, 517/525, and 527/535 Jackson Avenue, described as of Galley Shores lots 14 through 21, 24 and 25, Block 20, as provided in ordinance numbers 1005 and 1017, by deleting portions of regulations regulating assignability slash ownership and restrictions on mental health residents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts caused, providing an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance Number 1147.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we, we neglected, oh, I neglected to tell you that we were pulling this out of.
Okay, no problem.
I didn't want to interrupt, Jim. He's got flow.
He read very well.
He described this for the next one.
Exactly. Next time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Therefore, we'll move on to Agenda Item 11, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance Number 1148.
Ordinance Number 1148, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter 30 Land Development Regulations Regarding Recreational Vehicles and Parking by amending Section 30-107 Satellite Beach City Code, definition of recreational vehicle, amending Section 30-420 Satellite Beach City Code, parking residential vehicles in commercial zone districts, amending Section 30-536 Satellite Beach City Code regarding parking of vehicles in yards, amending Section 30-615 Satellite Beach City Code, parking or storing of recreational vehicles in residential zone district, providing editorial revisions, providing severability, providing for conflicts caused, and providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance 1148.
Thank you. Council comments?
I have, I have one item that I talked to the city manager about. In the paragraph here, it says 16 days. It's really 12 days, and I want to make sure that we don't mislead our residents, because it's every Saturday and Sunday, half a day Friday, half a day Monday. So that comes out to 12 days a month, not 16.
Yeah, I, I think the, the assumption was the weekends, but yeah, you're...
I mean, as far as days go, that's, that's what we're looking at, because it's only half a day Friday and half a day Monday. And I support the language and what we're doing for our residents with where we're moving in this. I think it gives them a little bit more flexibility. So I'm voting yes for this.
Questions from council before I open up for public comment? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 11. Here and none, bring it back to council. Staff, thank you, we've worked on this very hard, everyone for, you know, listening to all sides and putting this packet together. I think you did a...
Motion to approve 1148 on first reading.
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion from council? Here and none, Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Staff, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance 1149. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1149, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter 30 Land Development Regulations Satellite Beach City Code, by amending Section 30-107 to provide new definitions related to medical marijuana, amending Section 30-416 Sub B, see Commercial Zoning District, to allow Medical Marijuana Treatment Center Dispensing Facilities as a permitted use, creating a new Section 30-622 to provide regulations permitting Medical Marijuana Treatment Center and Medical Marijuana Treatment Center Dispensing Facilities within the boundaries of the city, and providing disclaimer, waiver, and indemnity provisions, providing legislative findings, repealing ordinance Number 1136, providing for severability, providing for conflicts caused, and providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance Number 1149.
Thank you. Council comments?
I'd make a motion to approve Ordinance 1149 on the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilman Gibson. Further discussion? Here and none, at this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 12. Here and no public comment, back to council, any further? Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes by nothing. Thank you. Thank you, staff. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, Discuss Take Action on Agreement with Brown &amp; Brown of Florida Inc. and the City of Satellite Beach for Insurance Broker Services.
Just very briefly, this agenda item ties back to your approval back at your August 2nd meeting, when we competitively bid the city's property casualty liability insurance services, and we have awarded the bid to Brown &amp; Brown, who was bringing us an insurance package with Pigeon. And this is the actual agreements with Brown &amp; Brown for the broker services component of, of that RFP process. Essentially, this matches up with the terms of the RFP, which included that this would be a three-year agreement. There's certainly termination clauses in there if we need to get out sooner. There's also two optional one-year renewals that can be granted at the city's discretion. The total cost for this particular broker services is $17,500 annually. That was part of the bid as well. And the overall scope of services that Brown &amp; Brown provides for us is, of course, the direct interaction and negotiations with the insurance companies for the renewals every year, or as needed, if we change terms. They give us advice and consultation on those management issues. They analyze and evaluate program strengths and weaknesses based on changes we might make to, like, our operations, and it could affect our exposure levels. They perform contractual transfer reviews and provide recommendations as we request them. They review loss reports, they act as their intermediary if there are claims, and they just do a variety of other things. So with that, I just wanted to bring this agreement back to you. It's pretty straightforward. The funds are budgeted in the city's 1718 budget.
Thank you. And it's for a period of two years with an option for one, correct?
Three years with two optional, one-year renewals.
Great. Thank you. Further discussion from council? Okay, at this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 13. Here and none, back to council, I have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion, authorize city manager to execute the broker services agreement with Brown &amp; Brown of Florida.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilman Brymer. Any further discussion? Here and none, Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, ma'am. Motion passes by nothing. Thank you. Staff, moving on to Agenda Item 14, Discuss Take Action on Contract for Purchase of Property.
Members of council, you may recall that this, this contract came before council previously, and the council approved the original contract with the proviso that it was going to be funded and secured by a portion of the city's utility tax. And I won't go through the boring details of everything that's going on, but basically, it went from being the pledge of this money, then they were talking about doing a lease purchase, now back to this. And the one issue that they want, that the buyers, council wants to address, is what's included in Paragraph 5. And at this point, and I handed out to council this evening a revision to what's in the packet, and basically, I handed it out, it was in your seat.
I got it right here.
Oh, okay, I, I thought you didn't see it. Okay, sorry. And basically, what ended up happening was, they originally wanted to have a bond council opinion, which is the format of the, one in the packet. We got a quote from the bond council, and the city balked at that, which is understandable. Yeah. So I went back and talked to the buyer's attorney, I mean, the seller's attorney, and we've worked this framework as what's included in Paragraph 5, except that they want the city to pay for whatever the CPA's opinion is going to be regarding the tax exempt. And we don't know what that's going to be yet, and it's going to be amended a little bit from what it is right now, but conceptually, the issue is whether or not council wants to pay for the CPA opinion for the seller. And the way that the seller's attorney spoke was, is when we revised that language, that he's, he's agreeable to having an out in there, that if the city doesn't want to pay for whatever this fee is going to be, that we can back out of the agreement. So I don't know, you know, he, we don't know what it's going to cost, so...
We don't have any idea?
We don't have an idea.
It'll be a lot less than the bond council.
Yeah, the bond council was either 12 or 12.5 or something like that, which is actually more than, I think, by $1,000 than the original one was.
Wow, okay.
For one-third.
So one-third of the out if the fee comes back to be higher?
Correct.
Higher than we feel is...
And we use the TD Bank loan as, we gave that to them as an example of, you know, we do these loans a lot, clearly, we're not going to default, you know, but that, that's her concern, because it's not a traditional mortgage. So the bond council opinions, they saw that in the documents and thought that that would, that would be something that we should do. Well, the problem is, is when you're getting a $2.5 million loan with, like, the TD Bank loan, a $12,000 bond council opinion is something you, you definitely want a bond council opinion for a bank loan, because, you know, it's bank. This is a very simple transaction in the way we're writing this up in the contract, so we just didn't see the need for a bond council opinion for this. But they wanted some protection, so they came back with a CPA idea. A CPA by an hourly rate is much less than, obviously, a bond council, so we can't, we don't see this being more than, I mean, if it's, if it's any more than $5,000, we're still, we're still going to balk at that.
Time.
We were hoping to have this on the next agenda.
Okay. Sure. Okay, questions, other questions from council? Good, thank you. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 14. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Fourteen. Here and none, no public comment, bring it back to council. Jim, anything else to add for us?
No.
Good, thank you. Motion?
So is, is the motion to authorize you to sign the addendum, is that what we're saying?
That's what, that's what the motion would be. Subject to making the...
The new changes that...
The, the changes regarding the, the, are out, so to speak, in the contract, or the addendum.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize mayor to sign the addendum to the contract for the purchase of the land adjacent to two ten Jackson Avenue, with the provisions, that there'll be an out put in when we find out the price of the CPA.
Correct.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilman Brymer. Discussion? Here and none, Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moncenero?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cino?
Yes, motion passes. Five, nothing. Moving on to Agenda Item Fifteen.